This conference will now be recorded.
Door.
Just five, not like you. There we go. I don't know if it's moving that way.
I don't know if I need more sticky notes or less. Greenbaum, can you hear everything okay?
Okay, I can hear you guys. I'm also hearing quite a bit of like shuffling noises and stuff on the desk. So, you know, all I would ask is that you just try to keep, um, you know, all the fidgeting down. But yeah, I think we have pretty good audio from what I could hear. You guys hearing me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And.
So the other, forget about the cat, okay? He's gonna be presenting for me throughout the evening. But, uh, one thing to be, uh, just keep in mind that if more than one person is talking, that the computer system will just not know where to go to pick up the audio and it'll be garbled for us out in cyberspace.
We do have new microphones in front of us. So hopefully that helps.
I heard that and I sound like Britney even with all your congestion. So, um, no, I'm looking forward to a really good, successful meeting. And the mayor is in charge of your proceedings. So as long as everybody stays in their lane and the audience participates when they're asked to participate, I think it should be very good and successful and this is the way of the future. So I see that there are other guys up there and looking forward as well to participating. So you've heard enough from me. You guys all have a good night and I'll be here. If there are any questions that come up, just feel free to ask.
All right. Kristi, are you okay? Okay. All right, well then, let us commence with public hearings. First order of business, second reading of ordinance 147 and ordinance to abolish Ennis ambulance service. Sending any copies, questions, comments, any comments submitted to the town? Public comment going twice. And a third time. Anything from online? For the first call. Second. And third. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the second reading of ordinance 147 and move on to the second reading of 148 and ordinance to lease space at 328 West Main to Madison Valley Medical Center. Any public comment? Once, twice. The lease agreement is open at this point. Public comment three times. Was there anything submitted to the town? No. Any public comment from those online? Seeing no comment from those online or in the room, we'll move on to item number three. Second reading of ordinance 149 repealing and replacing Town of Venice Business License Title III, all chapters except for medical marijuana. Public comment. Any submitted? None submitted to Town Hall from the room?
That's kind of bad.
I know, it's like, wow, this makes it even worse than it used to be. Like my man. Okay, so none from the room. Any public comment from online regarding 149 repealing and replacing business license? Seeing none from online. Close that and on to Pippin Conditional Use Permit Application for Commercial Industry Warehouse Space.
Do you all need me to come stand up? So you all have the application in front of you.
Oh, public hearing. So was there any public comments submitted? None to the town, to the room? Once, twice, three times?
Okay.
Anything?
Nikki, mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so the appropriate time for public comment on this conditional use permit application would be after the applicant and the staff report. And generally speaking, you'd proceed with the staff report, then hear from the applicant, then there might be, uh, questions, you know, back and forth. And then just before the commissioners go into their discussion, that's when you would ask for public comment. So it's premature to ask for public comment. Let's hear from Suzie and then we could hear from the applicant. And then as each presents their case or their facts, the commissioners can, at any given time, uh, they can ask questions. But generally speaking, it's best to hear first from staff, then hear from the applicant. Uh, and at the close of each person's presentation, then the commissioners could ask questions and there'd be rebuttal period. And then just before you go to discussion, that's where you would ask for public comment.
Thank you, James. I guess we're gonna try it that way.
Okay. So this application is from Ron Pippin of Pippin and Pippin Investments. Submitted a conditional use permits for commercial slash industrial storage warehouse space. This site is proposed development itself of the Madisonian. We annexed it in back in December, maybe, January? Um, so the legal description is Conley Edition, Block 5 plus 4 and 6. His intent is to construct storage unit, storage warehouse units, 8 units 25 by 30, each worth an unit height of 16 feet and ground height of 14 feet. The Ennis zoning regulations allow for storage warehouse units as a conditional use permit in the commercial, in the commercial industrial district. So the commission's actions should be under the Ennis zoning regulation. The Ennis Commission is tasked with holding a public hearing, evaluating the staff report, considering the required requirements necessary to grant a conditional use permit and approving, approving with conditions or denying the conditional use permit. So his compliance review findings and summary. The town ordinance allows for use of general appropriation with a particular zone, district, which may require additional scrutiny and approval with conditions. Town Commission may grant a conditional use permit under these circumstances. The commercial slash industrial warehouse space shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with its application dated 1/1/2022 and 10/22/21 and revised again on 2/18/2022. Any lighting has to be of use for illuminating parking structures or other areas shall be arranged as to deflect downward and or away from other adjoining properties. Lighting shall not exceed 20 feet or higher than the tallest building. Screening, this project shall include installation and maintenance of screening described in section 11, 4, 5, D. Trash collection shall be managed in accordance with the established, standards established in 11, 4, 5, D. All uses associated with bulk storage of all gasoline, liquid fertilizer, chemicals, flammable and other similar liquids shall comply with the Uniform Building and Fire Code requirements and any other county or state regulations. Water quality, hazardous waste and wastewater are subject to Montana DEQ, Montana Department of Health and Environmental Sciences Standards. It wasn't DEQ is what I said, but the Montana Department of Health and Environmental Sciences Standards. No hazardous waste, chemicals or wastewater shall be discharged within the town or zoning jurisdiction. Proposed water, wastewater treatment and stormwater drainage system for the warehouse storage shall be reviewed and approved by the Town of NS and Montana Department of Environmental Quality. All and any sewer infrastructure shall be constructed in accordance with the Town of NS Public Works Department standards and requirements established in Title 10 of the Town Code. Admissions of orders shall be controlled so the orders are not perceptible beyond the property. Landscaping shall be provided under sections 11, 4, 9 of the Ennis zoning regulations. Any signage of the subject's property shall adhere to the application standards set forth in section 11, 4, 12 through 11, 4, 17 of the Town of NS zoning regulations. Setbacks in commercial industrial require 50 feet in front and 25 side and rear. A variance to allow for the lesser setbacks shall be obtained prior to construction. The right to use an occupancy permit shall be contingent upon fulfillment of all general or special conditions imposed by the conditional use permit. I did email Mr. Pippin and asking for a landscape, a landscape plan as requested by Mr. Ransohn. And he's online, so I don't know if he'll have anything to say about it.
Welcome, Mr. Pippin. You're up.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing? Um, if I, if I may, I'd just like to go, uh, down through the staff report here. Most of these are non-issue. Item number one is, is just non-issue. Item number two. Uh, lighting would be shielded wall tape. Defer the lighting. Building permit. Uh, screening. I read through the listing on that and I'm, I'm not sure if this is required on this project. Around a piece. So that, that is a question. I'm not sure that is applicable to this project. Uh, trash collection. I'm not aware of any trash enclosures that have been required by any, uh, any of these types of projects. But I guess my question is, why is this project being required to do a trash enclosure? On number six, uh, non-issue, seven, a non-issue, eight, a non-issue, nine, a non-issue. I would like to defer the landscapes middle to building permit. Signage is a non-issue. Setbacks, we are requesting a variance on the setbacks for the, uh, plan dated 4/11/22. You know, the setback charts that it has or the town has right now, um, cuts itself off at one acre. So it really doesn't address any smaller parcels. This, this parcel being about a half acre. And, uh, so it doesn't, uh, those are very constrictive to this size of a project, the size of a lot size. And then number 13 is a non-issue. So in respect that, um, I think asking, uh, is, is a, a comment on the screening? A comment on the trash collection? I mean, I'm, I'm taking the trash collection when I read that ordinance, thinking that is a trash enclosure. I've asked if you, the other bike, uh, facilities and none of those, as I stated before, have trash enclosures and the tenants are generally required to, uh, maintain and, and transport their garbage. And then landscape, I, again, I would like to defer that to, to, uh, building permit. And then we are, uh, asking again for the variance on the setbacks. And that's it.
All right, having had our presentation from on staff and comments from Mr. Pippin, I guess now we can ask for public comment. None. All right. Once, twice, three times? All right, so that closed that section of the public hearing. And when we go to agenda to vote, we can go into discussion.
Can you make a motion?
No, because we don't motion during public hearings. Basically our time to hear public comment and then when we go to make a motion and vote, that's when we can discuss conditions. All right, so the next one for the public hearing portion is 4050 Conditional Use Permit Application for Construction of Six Three-Story condominium, condominium units on 1.71 acre North 40 subdivision. So Forrest.
Nikki, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt here for, uh, like, the, um, I'm waiting for my video to come on. The way that, you know, generally these, uh, applications are supposed to be heard is that you go from this application, you complete this application and then you go on to the next application. I'm not familiar with this process where you would just hear the staff and the applicant and then close the hearing. And then go on to another one.
You can't vote during public hearing. We confirm this with Dan Clark. So that's why we close public hearing and then put it into an agenda to vote.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna recommend or suggest that you do anything other than the way you're proceeding. But I'll just tell you that my experience, I mean, I've been down in front of the county commissioners on conditional use permits. I've represented clients in front of them and I've never seen it done in this manner where you would close it down and then reopen it at a later point. So it might be something that we'll take up at a later date and discuss the process. So I don't want to interrupt the way that you've scheduled this. But, you know, from a logical standpoint, I mean, you would hear from the applicant, you would hear from, uh, you know, staff, then the applicant, public comment, and then there would be discussion and then the commissioners would, you know, make some decision or not make a decision. That's generally been my experience. So I'm not exactly sure, um, what process or what Dan Clark had in mind. But, you know, I just wanted to put that on the record there and let you know, those are my thoughts and comments.
All right.
James. Excuse me, this is Ron Pippin. James, that's been my experience as well and I would certainly like to, uh, to hear discussion on the issues that I brought up on the project.
I mean, Nikki, are we going to, is the commission going to, uh, hear this again after this public hearing process is closed tonight? Are they going to review this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So we'll just, we'll just, for tonight, we'll do it this way, since that's the way you've got it all set up. And Mr. Pippin, I appreciate you've been very patient, you know, through the process. So I think everybody respects that and we'll get to you as soon as we get on to the next one. I guess that's the way they're gonna do it tonight.
Thank you, I understand.
All right, Forrest, you wanna do a presentation on, for staff report for the 4050?
Uh, yes, thank you. And for those who don't know me, my name is Forrest Mandeville. I'm a consultant planner, uh, work with the town on an as-needed basis. So just to touch on kind of what the process is, I have seen this a couple of ways. Typically, the way the ordinance, the zoning ordinance is written, you would have a planning board recommendation. Planning board would take care of the public hearing process, make a recommendation to the commission. And you'd be acting then on the, uh, planning board's recommendation regarding the application. So that's, I know you're having a discussion on, on your planning board, but that said, maybe one more reason to have the planning board up and running because it does help the Town Commission meeting stand a bit smoother relative to balancing the public hearings and the discussion agenda. But getting into the staff report then on the 4050 Development Conditional Use Permit, and I'm not going to read through this whole thing verbatim, you can hold your applause. This is a staff report to the Town Commission. In my capacity, serving the town with the on-call planning services, this request is by 4050 LLC. Brian M. Johnson of Western Roots Law is representing that firm. This is a conditional use permit for a multifamily residential project within the Town of Venice in the zoning C-CR core commercial residential. Just some background on the property, like I said, it is within the corporate limits of NS. It's a 1.71 acre property in the North 40 subdivision, south of the Mountain View Road, Otis Avenue and Highway 287. And you can see the legal description there in the staff report as well. Just, uh, jumping down to page three, some adjacent land use, I want to point out, adjacent property owners, properties to the south and north similarly zoned. The parcel to the north was conditionally approved for a very similar development about a year or so ago. And you can probably recognize that a lot of this report is pulled from the previous staff report by the previous planner, wanted to remain consistent with the very similar projects in close proximity to each other. Property is across Otis Avenue or zone RTD, which is the residential town density. They're undeveloped, unincorporated property located to east across 287 is AG160. And the applicant then is requesting this conditional use permit for a multifamily residential condominium project. It would be three separate three-story buildings, which would be accessed via Otis Avenue, served by the town public water and sewer systems. Each building would be separate dwelling units on each floor. So there's the 12 residential units total on the property for units per building. Is, hencelywise, it is consistent with the RTD zone, which neighbors it. The buildings are over 4,000 square feet. As footprint, parking pads, storage mechanical rooms on the ground level for service. I'm getting a little feedback. I don't know if that's on my side. But if you can't hear me, just let me know and I can repeat what I say. Then there'd be the, uh, separate three-bedroom residences, um, under separate ownership as this common and a condominium. The building heights are limited to 40 feet in this zone. Vehicular parking would, uh, come off of Otis Avenue and Landing Lane. There's plenty of parking. We're required to provide 18 spaces. They have a total of 34 shown. There's plenty of pavement, sidewalk connecting to Otis Avenue, et cetera. They do also have a landscaping plan, um, showing that there will be grass, deciduous trees, shrubs, boulders, that type of thing. And your final action is by the Town Commission. If, if you do decide to deny the application, you do have to change the findings or adopt findings different than these that would justify that conclusion. So I ran through these, the findings, point by point. I'm not gonna do that in detail, just to jump down though to the summary of findings down on page nine, which states that the applicable criteria for the issuance of the conditional use permit has been substantially met. There is a need for proposed, for this proposed use, public interest would be served and the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The conditional use permits complies with the provisions of the required items within your zoning regulations and the conditional use permit and application supplements adhere to the perimeters of your TND overlay. Running through the conditions of approval then, number one, multifamily residential development shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the submitted application materials of the site plan as submitted and approved by the Ennis Town Commission. Number two, the multifamily residential development shall be implemented in accordance with the minimum bulk and dimension requirements of the RTD zoning designation. Number three, a minimum of 18 standard spaces and one accessible space are required per the standards outlined in your zoning regulations. Required parking and circulation associated with the development shall meet applicable design guidelines set forth in the regulations, requiring adequate drainage, parking space delineation and shall be paved with concrete, asphalt or approved favors to control dust and erosion. Number four, water, wastewater treatment and stormwater drainage systems for the multifamily residential development shall be reviewed and approved as applicable by the town and DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality. And number five, water and sewer infrastructure shall be constructed in accordance with the Town Public Works Department standards and requirements established in your code. Six, the project shall include installation and maintenance of landscaping in accordance with the site landscaping plan and the provisions established for the vegetative screening in the zoning code. Number seven, private sale or occupation of any of the approved units, the installation of the proposed sidewalks along the, Brian, of Otis Avenue shall be completed in accordance with, uh, with your code. Number eight, exterior lighting shall meet the specifications in your zoning code as applicable, uh, which requires light deflectors or other equipments directing light downward and inhibiting lateral glare. Number nine, signage on the property shall adhere to the applicable standard set forth in your regulations. Number 10, trash collection shown on the site plan shall be developed and maintained in accordance with the trash enclosure standards established in the zoning regulations. And I know that it come up in the last one. So I just wanted to point out that the trash enclosure standards are defined in your code. Number 11, fencing on the subject shall meet the specifications in your zoning code. Number 12, private sale or occupation of the approved dwelling units, condominium documents shall be prepared and filed, which provide further continued maintenance of common space utilities and facilities. Uh, number 13, a TND agreement acceptable to the town needs to be prepared. And number 14, and I believe that TND agreement has been drafted as well. And number 14, the right to use and occupancy shall be continued upon the fulfillment of the general or special conditions opposed as part of this procedure. Now, um, Mayor, that concludes the staff report, and be happy to answer any questions when you get to that, um, that part of your agenda. Thank you.
From the applicant. Red light.
I'm Brienne Johnson, I'm the attorney for 40-50 Development. Um, nothing really substantive to put forth as comment, other than anything, any questions you might have for me. Um, this is substantially similar project to the one completed on block two. I also represented My Willow, um, during that process, um, for that permit, and, um, all of the conditions that have been recommended in the staff report were in agreement with.
Since my strange format, I might have you back up, so you're gonna visit with us more. Public comment. Ginger, was there any submitted to the town? Public comment twice. Man, three times, and anything from online. All right, that will conclude the public hearing portion. Now we get to vote and decide on things. All right, going straight into agenda.
I move to approve ordinance number one, where's that? All in Ennis, came out of the suits.
Started. Discussion, public. Once, twice, three times. Commission. Nothing from the once, twice, and three times for that one? All right, I'll call the vote. Shall we start, where did we start last time? Start with, start fresh. Tina.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, Your Honor.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, if and when the commissioners decide to vote in favor or opposed, or whatever other conditions they want to, uh, add, uh, it's just a matter of process that they would not just say, "I approve this," or "I deny this." So there should be, you know, if they, if they vote in favor, then they would then go to a portion where they would say, "Okay, we're in favor, and we made these findings." They may adopt the findings of the applicant, or they may adopt, you know, the findings proposed by, uh, staff. So it's just important that, you know, to preserve the record, that they, they proceed in that manner.
Correct, but at this point, we're on the ambulance ones, and we've already adopted those findings in our original resolution of intent.
Oh, then I, I withdraw my comment, I thought you were proceeding on the, the one that we just heard.
All right, so, that was nine.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion carries, abolishing Ennis ambulance service ordinance 147. 148.
Move to approve ordinance number 148, using a barrage, as now in the center.
Second.
Second, from Cory. Any public comment? Once, twice, three times? All right. Commission, comment.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Business license. 149.
I move to approve ordinance 149, business license, repeat and replace.
Second.
All right, any comment from out there? Once, twice, three times, anything from online? All right, calling the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. 149. Finished. Now, on to conditional use per, pending conditional use permit. There are motions for the person discussing.
I move to approve Pippin conditional use permit.
Second.
All right, public comment. Any questions? I had, or once, twice, three times? Online? All right, commission, questions, comments, conditions, this is our time.
Our code 11420C, it says classifications of site plans, and site plans, uh, major site plan criteria is anything over 5,000 square feet. So I feel as to need some major site plan. And I also would like the landscape provided, uh, done at building permit, and also, we did not have parking, finding that. So.
I didn't care that last time.
Uh, no parking on Forest and most of the other ones, there's parking, um, surfacing, curving, stormwater drainage, and stripage. Because of the size of it, it should be asphalt, concrete, paved, lined, curved, striped. And that's not in the conditional use permit.
Let me, let me see if I have that correct. It would be the town's requirement to pave this project?
Um, in our code, I, again, we're new to this, so bear with me. Usually we have a planner look at all this. Yes, I think it has to be paved. I could be wrong, but I think it has.
I don't see any other projects in town that was required to pay for similar projects.
It's in our code, and like you said something earlier about trash bins and other projects not having them. We recently had changeover in, um, employees and stuff, and we are trying to follow the code, what's in the code and wasn't in the book. And just because something wasn't done in the past doesn't mean it's not done now or it's not in the code, if that makes sense. And I don't know what properties you're talking about that don't have trash bins, or if they're in city limits, but it's in our code and it's all stated. So that's the stuff I came up with.
So it's the commission's requirement that this will have to be paid?
We can set those conditions.
I, I understand that.
Eric?
Was that last year, the gentleman was in here? Across from the post office.
And we've asked, same things were asked.
Right.
Same things were asked, and he got mad and said, "Well, it's never been required before," got mad and is now selling the property. And I understand that it's frustrating, and I understand that this is hard, because we're all in a learning curve, kinda, but, uh, I spent hours reading, and everything that I'm reading says it has to be curved, lined, striped, asphalt, concrete, with stormwater drainage, and a trash enclosure. And the landscape design should be turned in before we approve this, because if we approve this, we don't know what the landscape is.
Well, you would have a chance to comment on that at permit. I was asking for.
We don't, I don't ever see the permits, so that's fucked.
We don't review each permit individually. The commission is charged with viewing conditional use permits and has the ability to set conditions based on town code. And this question has been very consistent in trying to uphold that code. So that is why those screening requirements, trash, landscaping are part of that conditions.
Is this screening requirement applicable to this project?
Screening required, is it applicable?
Yes.
So Mr. Roy Lance was granted a conditional use permit, but he had conditions, he hadn't meet, and he didn't meet the conditions, and that's why he got angry. But I think Forrest can probably jump in and help us out a little bit. So the commission can still pass this conditional use, if they choose to, with conditions, or not pass it, I mean.
I guess, like, with Roy Lance, we weren't gonna, we wanted the landscape plan. When would it come back to us? Or do you just get to approve it later? That's why I guess I'm just, and a major site plan, this is, this is, this doesn't show anything, really. I, I just know what My Willow did, but I don't know Kevin Helen's mom's name compared to this. Does that make sense? And if we're gonna, it's hard to say yes to one and no, and yes to this, when we put so many other people through the wringer, and people come with stuff prepared, it's hard to.
Do you have to go before the adjustment to get that variant?
Not us. I guess that's where I am on this kind of stuff, is just.
That is part of this portion, is us setting conditions based on reports, based on public comment, based on our code.
So I guess landscaping, as long as it's up to code, I don't know, and then 14, I think we need to add parking.
So I see it, it's the difference between a minor and a major site plan. A minor just comes, and a major comes to the amendment commission.
Yeah, and it's over 5,000 square feet, so it should be a major site plan. And I don't, I guess I don't really know what justifies a major site plan then, but it says.
Really, except for our fees on our permit. I guess that is really the condition I use, but it used to, our fees, 101 is 200, but we're only doing the 200 now, but maybe.
I just have a question, how do you condition a permit? Those conditions have to be met before it can be filed issue.
Correct. That's what they're talking about, Mr. Roy Lance.
Then there could be a review of the landscaping plans and all of that at that time, to make sure the conditions are set properly met.
So we're gonna approve it?
conditioned permit.
My, I guess my other question is the bathroom. Is it just, like, there was an adaption from a previous plan? Because there is.
Do you have the drive in front of you, Mr. Pippin?
I do.
So it would be south of the Madisonian in lot three, there's bathroom labeled, and I was unclear as to.
I think there's a bathroom in each one.
There's a total of big bathrooms. Each unit would get a bathroom.
So they share a wall? So that's off the lot?
I'm talking off the lot, so is that, is it just a mistake in the site plan?
Up by lot three, in the middle of the page, at the top?
To the north of the Madisonian.
Oh, I see it.
No, to the west of the Madisonian. It says bathroom.
To the west.
Did you say that?
Yeah.
Right by lot three? Yeah, I don't think it's on there.
What is the question?
Is that a typo?
Is there a typo on the site plan? West of the Madisonian, there is bathroom written right next to lot three. Oh, I'm a little confused.
That's a typo, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We're not planning on putting a bathroom over the Madisonian's parking area.
Oh, good. Strange.
All the bathrooms are in the interior of the building of each unit.
So.
And just say the same as kind of landscape, um, a number 14, parking.
You can ask Forrest, he's a good.
For section 11-410. Just add it. Forrest, we could just add a number 14, parking shall be provided per section 11-410 of Ennis zoning regulations.
Uh, yes, I think it's 11-410B16 that does say parking spaces shall be paved. I can find that in just a second here.
We can approve the permit with conditions and add that, and add any of the conditions that we choose to, or you choose to. And I think the screening, the trash, the landscaping, and the parking are all conditions of that permit.
And if they're not met, then?
No occupancy may be granted.
I understand that.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Pippin?
Well, um, you know, with the, the, and, and you commented to, to regulations you're trying to enforce now, but to, uh, previously on this type of project, uh, there are things that are being asked for, uh, that there's precedent in town, uh, that, uh, add a substantial cost to this project. You know, it just, it just makes you go back to the drawing board. I would, I would ask for a variance on the, uh, on the paving.
Okay, uh, good evening again, Mr. Pippin, and, uh, Your Honor, Mayor, members of the commission. So just for purposes of clarity, the commission cannot grant a variance tonight. The commission does not have the authority to grant variances. You'd have to go to the zoning board of adjustment for any variances. The commission can proceed to grant or deny your application for a conditional use permit. If they choose to grant it, they can, um, you know, ask for conditions, uh, that's why it's called a conditional use permit. And one of those conditions would be, if you're asking for a variance, you know, that your conditional use permit would be subject to your ability to get a further variance. But, you know, you may, you might just wanna try to work things out with the commission right here tonight, and avoid that entire, uh, variance process, because that's, you know, that, that's further expense, further delays, um, and further, probably much more And further, probably much more stringent standards for you to appear to in order to get your variances.
Okay, I think I caught that interference on the audio.
Okay, so basically what I was saying is that the commissioners cannot grant you a variance here tonight.
Understood that.
Okay. Was there anything else that you may have missed?
Setbacks.
I'm sorry?
Setbacks. Building line setbacks.
Oh, the setbacks, right. So if you cannot conform to the setbacks, then you would need a variance. So any, and I think you established that earlier in your first presentation. So anything that the commission approves tonight is still subject to you getting your setback variances.
Right.
But you were, you were speaking further about something about the paving requirement.
Yeah, I, I was asking for a variance on that as well.
Right, so you'd have to go, again, just go to the zoning board for that.
Right, you know, the, the, the project just doesn't work. These are three lots. Each lot is 50 foot wide. If I'm, uh, to go to the chart, which again starts at one acre, that takes an entire lot. And I'm trying to build across these three. And it's, it's almost an excess dedication of the, of an entire lot to adhere to the setbacks. I mean, the setbacks are 50 foot. We're asking for right at 30 foot setbacks. We're maintaining a 20 on the backside for fire. Maintaining about 40 feet each side for swing room on these units. I'm just trying, we think this is a great infill project. I'm just trying to make this project work. And so we're gonna have to go through variance process.
Right, understood.
All right, let's work this one point at a time and start with the screening. So what is the purpose of screening? Right, this is commercial.
Right.
And these units intended use is, I'm just saying that maybe screening might be of benefit to you. It would provide a security for your investment. Keep it tight. So I guess what is the reason that you would be opposed to screening?
It's just additional cost to the project. And again, I, I keep going back to precedents. I don't see any other like project in town that has been required to put up screening.
Just because something was done wrong once does not mean that it continues to be done incorrectly.
I understand that. I mean, what are we, what are we screening for? There's no residential there.
I'd, I'd say it's just an aesthetic standard that we're trying to achieve.
I'm, don't misunderstand me. I, I'm not opposing screening. I'm just wondering out loud while these requirements are being required by this project. And again, you've explained precedence issues, but no projects in town have been held to the fire on this.
I have concerns when we do a commercial industrial warehouse space with individual bathrooms in middle of a housing crisis, that they may be inhabited. And I do think it is prudent that the property be screened as per the code. That's my feelings on screening. Commission's feelings on screening.
I had not considered that, and yes, I do agree with that. And I honestly believe that screening. I really don't have a problem with your project, but I do think you, it should be screened.
Okay, let's move on from that one then.
Okay, I guess the next point was the trash. This is commercial and commercial makes sense to have a receptacle for garbage. It just kind of makes common sense to me.
But it's saying an enclosure for the.
It would make all the sense in the world. There was.
When, if it would be easy to incorporate into this screening, there's several locations on the site plan where I think it would be very easy to incorporate if you now are considering screening as a possibility.
I understand that, but with a lack of a, a contract garbage pickup, I'm not sure what use that would be.
There's two.
There's several. There's three available.
And again, I go back to precedents. There's not a project that I viewed in town that has a garbage enclosure of this type, this type of project.
What type of project in town are you comparing yours to?
Small warehouse space.
So where?
I, I don't have any addresses in front of me. We just did some drive-by research, let's put it that way.
Mr. Pippin, my, my garbage container on Maestri blows over almost every couple of days. And I think in order to contain garbage, especially in a commercial application, I think it, I think it needs to have that, that protection from the wind, so.
Okay.
And Corey, I would just like to add for the record, just again, just for clarification. And Mr. Pippin, I'm not trying to pick on you or, or, you know, in any way, any regard whatsoever. But I just want to point out, and I, I imagine Forrest over there, he's a professional planner. He'd probably be nodding yes. But land use cases, land use cases are very site-specific. And even when we get up to the Montana Supreme Court and we look at zoning decisions and determinations, you know, they'll be, they'll be the first ones to point out that it's not a precedent. So every case has to be handled separately and reviewed separately. Whether the commissioners look to past performance or not, you know, they certainly can do that. Absolutely, you have the right to make that argument. But it's, you know, it's one of those things that it progresses over time and it's very site-specific. So I just want to put that clarity on, on the record. Thank you.
Yeah, and I agree with Mr. Greenbaum. The, the other consideration is, and I, I don't know when some of these other projects to which Mr. Pippin is referring may have been approved and what the zoning regulations were at that. Not uncommon to see zoning regulations put in place in order to address something that has been seen in the past that the town wants to avoid moving forward. So if these regulations were adopted, since the site you're pointing to was developed, the subsequent developments would be subject to the regulations as they are now. The council can't really go back in time and apply new regulations to pre-existing developments.
Yeah, I don't think I'm pointing out new regulations is the case. These just weren't in progress when obviously these other projects were put in.
To that at all.
Okay, where are we at?
Where are we at? So the next one is landscaping. And I guess on this, on a commercial, I don't expect a huge extravagant something, but I do would like to see something. Randy?
I just had a question. So I would, I don't have an opinion one way or the other on the trash collection. I would like to hear from my other two commissioners as to how you feel. As this has to be, all of us have to make a majority vote moving forward with trash. And I do believe.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but with the gentleman's comments, I'm, I'm in agreeance to the, to the garbage enclosure.
Okay, thank you.
We do get wet.
Thank you.
All right, landscaping. Have at it, guys.
So if I may, what came up during, what was the, the Royland proposal to the south of you was potentially the need for water. If you want anything to grow around here, you're probably gonna have to put a drip line to these items. And in my, my personal opinion, I think I love how sagebrush looks and I like really robust plants personally that require lower amounts of water and even a zero scape type application is what I'm all about. So that's my, my input.
I agree. I'm not opposed to, to at all doing landscape. I just wanted to, you know, once, once we get through all this, I'll go to engineer design. And the landscape portion would be inclusive of that. I don't know, I guess I should send you some pictures of other developments that I've done. They're very well landscaped and maintained. That's part of the curb appeal of a project like this.
Well, Suzie, do you feel comfortable reviewing those landscaping plans as far as part of the building permit?
So Royland's had to come back to you during the closing of the approval.
Okay, is that what we want to do for the landscaping portion?
I'm not sure if you set conditions.
Well, I'm sorry, we're gonna end up going to a variance on this. I can provide landscape design.
It's a different board. We have a zoning board of adjustments as you go to for the variance. It won't be the commissioners.
Okay.
But Suzie can bring it back to us.
All right, so we're good on landscaping and the last was parking, is that correct?
Yeah, there was a requirement for asphalt, am I correct?
For asphalt?
It says asphalt, concrete or pavers. Pavers. Surface curbing, stormwater drainage and drainage, it's all in there. And when you go to that section, it actually has so per warehouse and storage, one parking spot per thousand square feet. So he would need six, which I think is what he has.
Yes, he has six, so.
And actually, there'll be a lot more than that. We just threw in what the requirement was there.
Yeah. That's not on the plan. But.
Again, that would be on the permit set.
Other commissioners' comments on parking.
So we have to amend the motion?
To approve those conditions.
To add the 14.
Any other, how's the commission feel about?
I'm just not following how it will work. We will just.
We'll prove it with the conditions and then he'll have to meet the conditions.
And then he will come back to us for.
Yeah, when he does his building permit, it sounds like he will bring back landscape and parking.
All right, Ron, you okay with that?
Yeah, I think I caught all that. I do want to have a conversation about the proposed setbacks. I know that has to do with variance, but what is the commission's comments on that? Don't you guys give a recommendation at all?
No, we do not.
Well, that's just a whole nother hurdle then. And I've been working on this for nineteen, nineteen months.
The pace of government is the new term that I have learned and I, I understand as a business owner, like it is very frustrating that there is, we identify a need, we fix the need, that is our nature as business owners. And it is different to be in this seat for sure and a learning curve. But that's the process. And we'll go, we'll get through it together one piece at a time.
I understand that all too well.
Thank you so much. So back to the council for amending with conditions. Is that how I'm understanding?
I amend the previous motion for Pippin and Pippen investments to include conditions 14. Parking shall be provided per section 11-410B of the NIS zoning regulations.
Along with the screenings, the trash and the landscaping plan.
That's all they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, motion?
Second.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? We're all good?
Are we sure we got the right, the right code? Is it 11-4? 10?
11-410.
He is a point.
Yeah.
Let me, let me understand. These are all conditions that will be put forth. So the variance, as we've discussed and, and worked through these, the variance is gonna, the requested variance is gonna be the setbacks. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I've gotta have the setbacks to make the project work. And I, I'm not sure why the, the town doesn't amend those setback requirements because they cut off at one acre. And there's, there's a few lots infill projects there in town that are gonna be applicable to something like this. So this is not gonna be the first time that, and I'm sure it's not the first time that you ran into this, but for these smaller lots there in town, it's gonna be an issue on these setbacks.
There's.
We will schedule a meeting with the zoning board of adjustments to address the setbacks.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that.
We will set a date to meet with the zoning board of adjustments on the variance for the setbacks.
Okay. Is there anything I need to do on my end?
Nope, Suzie will be in contact with you on that one.
Okay, Suzie's been very good to work with, by the way.
Can't hold applause anymore.
All right, thank you for your time, Mr. Pippin. We're gonna call the vote.
Thank the council for their time. I appreciate it.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Pippin approved with conditions. On to the 40-50. Hi, guys. All right. Motion?
I move to approve the 40-50 conditional use permit.
Second.
All right, discussion.
That's really easy. You just say second.
Chime in every time. Sorry.
All right, now that my paper shuffling is appropriate. All right, questions, comments? I have one, and maybe it's in an older email, and it wasn't part of Forrest. And it was from Jerry Gravence.
Grabneck?
Grabneck, thank you.
Great West Engineering guy dealt with him at one point. I don't know what happened to him.
He was contracted.
Contractor. Yeah. So in that email, the thing that I found was that the certificate of subdivision approval for that lot was for two duplexes and one-two unit commercial.
So that was in regard to the original permitting through DDQ, when you have to kind of replan how the sewer and water connections you're gonna have, so that you have adequate sewer and water. You are not confined to that as being the absolute, this is what it has to be. And so that carries no legal weight for requirements for to build that exact thing. And so as long as what we're doing is within what is available for sewer and water requirements, it's still in compliance, is my understanding. And I don't know if Forrest wants to weigh in on that. Do you have a different interpretation?
Yeah, I mean, I don't claim to speak for DDQ or any of their rules. But I did include a condition, condition number four, recommended condition number four, that would require review and approval by DDQ to the extent that they see fit. So I think that would cover Jerry's concerns, because I did see Jerry's email on that as well. And we had discussed that with Ms. Johnson earlier, I believe, earlier this year. So I do believe that's covered in the recommended conditions.
Okay, that was my. Sorry, Josh.
I can shed more light if you want. It's something that we've run up against on almost every project that we did. Because when we submitted the first plan application, that's our best guess, what's needed. And it's basically up to the user, to ensure that you have the water to the best you can make the proposal for it. So while that was our best guess at the time, we had to get that once. So it's really just kind of the guidelines that we gave DDQ so that we could assess the property adequately if we had correct size water. So that's kind of the why that is. So if this is within the capacity of the panel, that's you have the capacity is more important than what the D.
I understand that. What is it, the MFE that I can never remember what? Yeah, what it stands for. But I just wanted to make sure that we knew that that lot had, that while it said duplex and commercial, that just making sure that the water equivalent was the same. You know what I mean? That it was the equivalent, that there was enough water for you to do this project. That's, that was my concern when I saw that email, trying to get clarification, that make sure that the requirements for you would be able to be met.
Yeah, it's very important to me, because commercials can be brewery.
I know. I'm like, how do you? That's the magic ball.
In part of our due diligence, which we don't have this in writing, but if you could confirm where it gets. Oh, I'm sorry. Did we talk to you?
He's a new public.
Okay, it might have been with Kelly Elser. Then we, okay, it might have been with Kelly Elser that we had discussed the sewer and water connections on that lot. Because there were questions with block two, uncertain water connections that we resolved prior to that.
Okay.
So the, the previous meeting that we had for the lot to the north, we talked about fire and the building height. I'm just curious how we, how we make sure this is, you know, I mean, maybe it's just buyer beware, or?
Actually, since that last meeting and the approval, it said one of the things that would be addressed during the state permitting process was fire. So on the block two projects, we went through the state permitting, they do require sprinkler system throughout the building. And so this next, so that project along with this project, because of the state requirements, will have sprinkler system.
Cool.
So.
What's the state requirements?
I don't know.
Besides the surface water, you need four sprinklers or.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
It's just a random question. Do you have one?
Yeah, one of the, I guess, the previous, like, the, what is that word? The cost, basically, per square foot, I think. And I know everything's going up in price.
I'm not even gonna hazard a guess at this point, because it's just too impossible with where we're at today. And who knows what happens by the time we, you know, the builder actually gets to the point of putting it up. I can't hazard a guess at that. It's, the market's too volatile. So I'm just, oh. I mean, we could go one way or the other. I mean, things could continue to be difficult with supply access, and that drives up costs. Or I don't know, we all, there's monkey flu somewhere now or something. And so maybe the monkey flu hits, and everything's going for 20 bucks. I don't know. So yeah, I can't give you a price point. I won't, I won't put something like that on the record, because it would be inaccurate and no matter what I do.
Where's my other one? Why so much parking? I mean, I like parking. I don't like to walk, but. I know.
Yeah, there's not good parking out there. And one of the considerations when we were in the early planning process on block two, and I think it might be, I don't know if it's in the regs or not, but there's not much parking on Otis. And even if there was parking on Otis, we did not want to clog Otis with vehicles, especially because then if you're trying to get fire or EMT or something like that, they can't easily access and navigate. And also, I think, part for me, part for my clients and the architect, we hate going to buildings as a guest and we can't find parking.
I think the other one has extra parking, too.
Yes, they actually have the same amount of parking between both ones. And so we were, we were happier to overdo, to relieve any congestion on the main floor bears in the subdivision itself. And we had the space.
Well, Otis is no parking.
Yeah.
I can't believe it's not there.
So yeah, that's the other part of the two.
What else?
Anything else on storm, stormwater drainage? I know there were a couple of retention ponds out there previously, and I think those.
There were.
Yeah, those have gone away, but what's that?
Well, actually, so the stormwater pond structure that was on the original planning for the subdivision was again, kind of the same thing like you do when you spec out for DDQ at subdivision review process. You put in a rough guide to where and how you're gonna deal with your stormwater. You do not have to use that in plan. However, DDQ requires that you have proper stormwater drainage. So how these front plans will work, and we have an engineer on staff who's helping with that process to make sure that the grade of the property and the location of drainage is appropriate, so that stormwater can be drained off the lot. But instead of keeping a retention pond, potentially, that could be a hazard for little ones, you know, whatever, we'll do drainage. The site plan will be great in such a way to provide drainage off the lot through proper drainage into the city system. Into the earth, excuse me, into the ground. Not the sewer system, sorry.
Good.
I was like, wait, we have a water problem sometimes. I was like, wait.
We're gonna flood, so don't worry about it. We're just gonna flood the city sewer system, no begging.
It's a huge giant stuff.
No, so it'll be grading and grading, that will drain it into the ground. And I think if you see on the site plan, there is more landscaping. I think it's about 41%. Even the minimum requirement is 21% or something. And so we've got plenty of open land to go ahead and direct that flow in a way that's not a pond. Though I know I think there are some sites, even towards morning, that have been built with retention pond.
Other questions? Eric, do you have any questions, concerns, your kind of, did we miss anything in water and sewer? And streets and?
Drainage is fine. There's gotta be some kind of drainage. So I'm kind of new to, so when I roll in here, oh, here's the retention pond. It show up next week, there's a building on it. But I have a question. That's.
And I mean, I'm happy to get you in touch with our engineering guy who's doing the drainage work. But yeah, we have to meet DDQ standards, too.
The one retention pond we do have. That'll be great. I'm just saying how, what's going on now. That's my concern.
Okay.
And I think condition number four also addresses the stormwater drainage.
Yeah.
DDQ will go through all of it.
Yes.
I didn't see it in the packet, but 11-3 F1, applicant will provide a draft, traditional neighborhood, TND agreement.
Yeah, so with that.
Or maybe I'm like, is it part of the planning thing?
I submitted that last week. Previously, that has not been asked for, and I wasn't quite aware that it was. I wasn't quite aware how that worked. So Suzie and Jim Greenbaum got me a form. Did it not make it into your pockets?
It did not.
Okay. So, and I wasn't entirely sure what to do with that, because I specked out based on what Mr. Greenbaum and Suzie has provided to me. And then there is a findings and conclusions in the TND, and I just took the stock.
Didn't we do this on the last one? Alex did it?
Alex, I think, worked it into the conditions.
To the conditions.
Yeah, maybe. It was a little more cobbled together. When we're streamlining. So yes, I have submitted a proposed TND. And it basically says a lot of the same things that the staff report conditions say.
We did one for, it's kind of a copy from the one we did for Willie's.
Yeah, I worked out the one from Willie's.
Oh, that's when we did one. I was like, didn't we do one?
Okay.
And I do have it, and I'm, if you want, it's not a copy, I'll take. I can forward it to you.
Okay. If you're good to just forward it to us.
Right now or tomorrow?
Tomorrow. I mean, unless anybody, if it was built off of the other one, like, I'm good with it. I'm just, again, like, filtering through this midnight reading and trying to make sure that we're all playing by all the same rules. And good to go.
Yeah, so there is a TND in the record that I think probably will need to be looked at by your council and conform to, make sure they conform to the conditions. I did not have the staff report at the time, but I submitted the TND, so I couldn't conform to the conditions. I didn't get the TND, or excuse me, the staff report until this Tuesday. I submitted the TND last week.
All right, streamlining. That's what needs to happen. Any other questions? Concerns, comments? Anybody?
Yeah, for Forrest, and it just goes back to pricing. Forrest finding effects, finding number one. He has in there that, let's see. The proposal is intended to be reasonably affordable for young families and workers in the community. And I think it's, at some point, not trying to put this on like, anyone, but just more a discussion topic that we do need to define what affordable is on, on an employer end of things. For the town, people need to think about what they, you know, if your employees are gonna purchase a home, what you, what's required of wages to employees. So.
But there is no provision in the zoning code that defines.
We're talking purpose.
Yeah.
You can't tell people what to sell.
And also, there's a regulatory taking issue potentially there, so.
I find it very strange that it's, maybe clarification there for, as part of the staff report. I did find that strange, because it's not in the zoning. Okay.
Yeah, it's also, there's a state law now that says you can't require set-asides to provide for affordable housing. That's a new state law. Just kind of as a typical rule, though, we consider multifamily housing to be at least more affordable than single-family housing on large lots. So when you start to get closer to town in denser developments, it's presumably going to cost less than a 3,000-square-foot house on a 10-acre piece outside of town. Of course, every town's different, and there are going to be certain dynamics. But that's generally how we think of things, at least in the planning side of things. But yeah, I mean, we can't predict whether or not this is going to be affordable as, as affordable as we might want it to be, or affordable to everyone that we might want it to be. But good point, yes.
The fee was equal to.
Thank you, Forrest.
Right, any other conditions other than the ones kind of laid out?
So, Your Honor, this particular development is in a traditional neighborhood district overlay. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there might be something in your comprehensive plan. And I'm not, I'm not trying to steer this, you know, discussion in any particular direction. I'm just kind of following up on like what Forrest was speaking about as far as affordable housing. And there might be something in your comprehensive plan that speaks to the issue of employee housing or affordable housing. You don't want to hear my personal comments on it, because, you know, trust me, I've, you know, on the East Coast, which is. know, on the East Coast, which is almost as radical as the West Coast, I mean, you can only imagine where these, you know, these districts and the overlays and requirements go as far as provisions for providing and, you know, then all of a sudden you get, the government gets involved in building and developing. But, you know, I'm getting into like a very out there kind of academic discussion only because it's close to eight o'clock and, you know, we have to provide some entertainment to keep Forrest smiling and Breann down there and everybody else entertained. But, you know, affordable housing, I don't know how that even impacts this particular development or proposal, but I'd love to hear something from Breann on it.
I would be happy to talk with you off the record.
All right, what did you have?
So, are you suggesting they put a community garden in here in their landscape plan?
Well, it depends on what they're growing, Corey. And, and you know, we have that coming up on the agenda as well, next week or next month.
All right.
Do we, so do we have adequate water?
That will be as part of that condition is making sure that it's all met and the-
And currently my understanding based on the last water and sewer capacity report, there is some concern for this particular project. I know you guys have concerns going forward, especially with any additional annexation, but in regard to North 40 and any, anything that we built out there now, is that maybe a brewery, but I don't know if it's on for that, should still fit within your parameters. Of course, you, that's something that you can internally, but that was something that we had to inquire about and do some research with the town on previously. My understanding is that we are okay. Josh. All right.
Josh is like, I've spent lots of times with Virginia City.
Josh, can you come to the mic, please?
Sure. It's not on.
Is that it?
I'll talk about it. So in-
You're red.
I think it came out in October 21, Great West did a capacity report for you. And I don't remember exact numbers, but there, your water capacity had room for approximately 300 new units in town. And your sewer capacity was around 520 new units in town. In fact, the sewer functioned better with more units because it gets stagnant without enough flow. So based on that, I think you still have plenty of capacity in town.
It depends on what's going into that flow, I guess, would be the, no more sub pumps, no more extra water. We're gonna invite Virginia City to come use the potty over here some days. Because they have too much and we don't have enough sometimes. But I think that's kind of, and then we've got that, again, long-term planning.
So that was your last assessment. I have a copy.
I have that copy.
Anything else?
Anything else from anybody else?
I'm not really particularly happy, but I can't really do anything about it. The TND is really complicated. I spent a whole bunch of time this afternoon trying to get a map of it. There is not one.
It's in the LCR, CCR, and PI districts.
Yeah.
Which, so it's not contiguous.
So it's all kinds of. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so is there an updated map of this? Because I have mine now laminated, so it goes everywhere.
Wait, do you have that updated one? Because I don't.
No, I don't. That's what I've heard. There's a more recent version and I'd love to get my hands on it.
I would too.
2011? Okay. So, I have the most recent version.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We'll check into that. And again, anybody that wants to write letters to the county commissioners supporting GIS and rebuttal, because that one guy doing a lot of town stuff. Anyway, that was my plug.
He needs help.
He needs help. We all need, want some help, that's over here. All right. So, with the conditions that were set forth and you said they were all good. Are we good? All right, I'm gonna call a vote. No, because you went on the last one.
Aye.
Aye.
No. All right. We're still majority.
Majority carries?
Yep, yep.
All right, you're good.
We're done with that. Thanks, guys.
Well, it was overwhelmingly voting, like it did not have much support. And he has questions. I don't like the fact that it's right up against a residential town density district. So you've got little houses that can only be so tall and there's a skyscraper right across the street from it.
Lisa tried to fix the zoning.
And that just seems kind of not right.
But that's not the conditions that it can enforce.
I understand. I know, and there's nothing I can do about it, but-
I fought last time.
But I just know that the community was really overwhelmingly not in favor of the first project. Yeah, oh, yes, I guarantee, I, I'm telling you, they're coming for us.
All right, guys, on that one. Because it's one of our 26 items that need to be addressed in, oh, only 26, I meant 2,600 that need to be addressed in the town zoning.
Not that I'm opposed to-
Was there, Mayor Nikki, were there findings in support of approving?
Yes, they're, they are part of Forrest's report. They are in there.
Okay, so you basically adopted the recommendations and the findings of Forrest's report? Okay, thank you.
We would like to do that, if we did not formally do that. I think we need to say it officially, but-
I'm going to approve what the commission, you turn, would be the finding.
No, the findings would be, the staff report findings.
With the findings as written.
With findings as written.
Should we add that in, James?
Yes, that's typically what you would do. And then if you had anything extra to add to that, you would, but, I mean, if Forrest provided a good thorough report that supports your decision, you would just simply adopt that and add that into your permit conditions.
So I move to amend the motion of-
We already voted. So we'd have to, we already voted, so you'd have to do, you have to adopt his finding, his staff report with findings and facts in support of the motion you made, basically.
I thought that's what the suit, it's all there for me, the findings are all good.
It's a doubt, it's an extra CYA, just. It's an extra CYA, I would do it.
This is not the actual permit. You guys will now issue.
Forrest, do you want to give him the language?
Please. Just say, make a motion to approve the findings as included in the staff report.
Like Alex made us do that last time.
Yeah.
I make the motion to include the findings as written in the staff report.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the findings as written in the staff report. Any comment? All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Findings adopted. Whoa, on to the master plan.
Wait, so now you voted yes?
Yes.
I don't have master plan on here.
There was an updated agenda sent to you.
She did.
No, that was just for the findings of fact.
She changed her vote.
Say what?
Huh? You changed your vote.
No, I'm voting no then, okay? No.
Can't have take backs.
I'm sticking with no.
Come to all of them from here on out. It's entertaining.
It's a process, is what it is. And we're getting through it in a slow, painful, learning way. All right, master plan. Ta-da. I know there's been a lot of homework and calling and, so what you got?
We're gonna make a motion first, yeah?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the document work done on the master plan for the town of Ennis as all deliverables in the scope of work have been completed.
Sorry.
Talking about, I didn't sleep last night at all.
So there's a motion on the floor.
We need a second.
Oh, I didn't hear that, sorry.
I didn't, I didn't.
I said second after I called him out on who wrote that.
Okay, so now you may go into discussion. Oh, I guess we can go. Hey, any discussion from the room on the master plan? Once? Twice? Anything from online on the master plan? All right, closing public comment, moving on to commissioner comment. Discussion.
I think the master plan sucks in its entirety.
Yeah, for the most part, yes. You can't say that yes in entirety. So I think, and this is my take on this, there are things and lessons that need to be learned in every system and evaluation that we do, right? We have learned that zoning could really use a flow chart. We know that desperately needs a flow chart and a lot of work after that. And we also know that the master plan did not go as our best dream, our best vision, our best whatever. And we did contract somebody to do the work. They did their findings, they did their thing. There's things we don't like, there's things town doesn't like. They did do this exactly as Corey's motion said. This is the document as deliverable. That does not mean that it is an ordinance, that does not mean that it is an entirety. We can take the work that they delivered and it doesn't have to be the absolute final document. You can, at that point, then, we can go into public hearings, we can have another discussion. I saw the master plan as a block of Swiss cheese, right? Altogether, maybe not so bad, but then we start slicing it. The steering committee didn't work out as intended. The timing didn't work out for the benefit of communicating with the business owners. You don't apparently ask a business owner in Ennis in July what they think about anything because they're running around with their head cut off, right? That's what we learned. So we take this document, know that it needs to be probably amended. So intent to adopt this and amend it. We can amend it later. And when we go to that point, I really say, like in fire, we do an after-action review. This is what went well, this is what did not go well. Actually document that process because we're, this council or a good portion of it will have to review and go through this process of growth policy. Because that is going to be up within our term. And when we do the water per part of the contract with Great West was having community outreach, outreach, it's similar to what the steering committee was doing. So I think it would have been missed to afterwards, make our adoptions, do the after-action review and ask Nora, ask Wayne, what went well, what didn't? Karen was at a lot of them, what went well, what didn't? What are the lessons that we need to learn to make this work better for us in the future?
And Nora did reach out to me this, last week and said, we can modify this. She was totally willing to help modify it and add stuff, and Karen wanted her stuff added that's not-
And we did.
In what we're, oh, you did?
Yeah. That has been adopted and they're trying to update it on Envision Ennis. So it's not forever, which is a thing, because a whole bunch of us are like, yuck, yuck. It's kind of our, it's our basic-
Future funding too.
Yeah.
When you have this kind of stuff updated and then played, you get grants easier.
And there's a lot of this that, let's face it, is not entirely up to the town to decide. Like the Main Street portion upon a whole bunch more discussion, like a lot of it depends on the crash reports. So the DOT is in charge of that portion of our road and depending on how many people back into other people, they can choose for safety reasons to make it parallel parking without-
Or quit shortchanging.
Or whatever. So they- I thought in there that Wayne had been in contact with them. That Cushing Terrell had updated them with the, and again, the DOT is doing a safety study, a corridor study this summer, I do believe. So that will be more information that is going to take into a plan. You don't just go, hey, I'm gonna do this, especially major changes like that without serious evaluation as to implications. And for us, understanding who is in control of what is a big part. Having honest conversations with people is going to be a big part. And then trying to accommodate for what we foresee as worst-case scenario. My worst-case scenario in my mind really is that the DOT says, okay, parallel parking. And we're like, okay, uh, we have no control over that. And now the town has not planned for any additional parking, so we're double-screwed. So these are things that I'm trying to consider in this whole master plan.
So Tina, it does, so it says, under Montana law, the master plan is an advisory document and is not page nine. Under Montana law, the master plan is an advisory document and is not regulatory in nature. It provides direction for the town, staff, elected officials, developers on communities, priorities for the future of land, housing, transportation, infrastructure, local economy growth, and town character. And Nikki and I met the other day, one of the items that came up in discussion, I think, that I thought was interesting is like developers will, will come in and ask us, and some of these people we know, Chris Murphy is one of those individuals, Josh is another individual, Mike Brown, we know you.
You're in the room.
But you have to, you have to reference something, you can't just have your own personal agenda like, no, we don't like your subdivision because why? You know, if we're representing the townspeople, you know, hopefully we can all alter this document to a certain degree so it reflects what we want to say. And we can reference this when any one of these developers come up and talk with us and are like, well, I need to push this thing through for this reason. And it's like, no, if I go to page 33, it actually says your subdivision doesn't quite meet what the, what the rest of the town is looking for. So ultimately, it's a tool that we can use for development, so, and it's an important one.
And with DOT's corridor study, they can do whatever they want with Main Street and everything, it's theirs. But with this plan and with some kind of action, they have to include us too. Because we have a plan, we have started stuff. Does that make sense? Like if we didn't have anything and they came along and they're not gonna go back to the 97 plan or 2010 plan and say, okay, you guys are on top of this.
Yeah, but we have a, we have a lot of Main Street representation right here between U-five, which is, uh, kind of a rarity. I think it's kind of cool, each one of these individuals runs a business right on Main Street, so. Yeah, hopefully we can find a common ground and, uh, get moving forward on a resort tax.
Cory!
I just wanna, I just wanna jump in here and make a comment before it gets too late and maybe before I forget. But I just wanna say, um, you know, tonight's hearings were, were really great, uh, the way they were conducted. And the summary that Cory just provided about the comprehensive plan really was excellent. I mean, I think I might have to write a letter to the Supreme Court and hold Cory in contempt for practicing law without a license. I mean, it's just like, no, it was really a good, excellent summary. And that's exactly what the comprehensive plan is. It's guidance, it's a policy, it's something that you can refer back to. But it's not something in concrete that you're stuck with. And circumstances change and you can go on and do things, um, as you see fit. But I thought that was a great, great summary, Cory.
Alright, Nikki.
So when things come up and we do want to change or alter, um, do you have to wait three hearings or like that? It's a working document.
It's a working document, so technically you don't.
Right? It's not ordinance or anything.
No, it's not ordinance or anything.
We can amend it, Nora said she'd come.
Yeah, so we can do that, and I think we should. And I think it would be great to have Nora and say, hey, like, really, what went well for you guys? Yeah.
Because you guys are new and you weren't, you know.
And then I'm sure there's, and then she's done this same thing in other communities. Why did it work well there? Why didn't it work well here?
Covid.
We can blame everything on Covid. That's why everything's expensive, that's why the world, anyway. So, any other discussion on it? You can require the mayor to set it on the agenda for some time, but remember, we have budget coming up. But it won't be, it won't be lost, this is on, hot on the radar that you several had concerns.
So what we are going on today is utilizing grant money to support the master plan, but not a hundred percent.
Saying the work is completed, so the correct statement.
Yeah.
Working document, nothing's legislation, nothing has to be done.
Do you want me to read the motion again?
No, no, I just, I'm still asking for.
Language.
Motion to approve the document work done on the master plan for the town of Ennis as all deliverables in the scope of work have been completed.
But Karen's, Karen's issue was addressed.
Yes.
And Ari's issue, though, is that we addressed.
Yeah.
More clearly.
In conversation, because that's what we should do. That's how we make it better.
Yes.
A lot more. So probably we shouldn't do it in July and learn from how it didn't work last time. Yeah.
Yes, for sure.
Alright, so giant note that.
What, uh, sorry, what is the full spectrum of the project that we've got in? Like our last master plan.
Ten years.
Two and a half, right?
Yeah, I'm noticing that master documents, water evaluation, wastewater evaluation, growth, policy, streets, comprehensive plan, master plan, whatever you wanna call it, those are all ten-year documents. Yay! I'm goodie. Yeah. Alright. Till the magic money fairies come visit us in our sleep, yes. I like those fairies, I wish they'd come here. Alright, so work session, so October. Okay, so any other? We're good? Calling the vote. No.
Aye.
You're still there, right? Alright, alright, still Carrie. I was either gonna abstain or vote no, because it was not on my thingy and I came in on Monday and asked. I don't like paying Cushing Terrell, I don't think they did a very good job. Yeah, I know. Now the grant's paying it. Because grants free money. Second. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm re, I'm. You gotta be fast these days.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Aye, 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 aye.
So an important date calendar, like we added our training the week two, like the, uh, new battlefield. Thanks for letting me call in, I appreciate it.
Good night, everybody, thanks Forrest.
I'm in your space, but I don't know else, really.
And there's two more out, so.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm here.
Oh, you have the mics, but, like, I was gonna.
I have, I have, at least that one heard. I know.
I just have that.